Good morning. I'm going to call the February 6, 2024, meeting in Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First order on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Oh.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here who would like to speak on a subject that's not on the agenda? Steve, do we have anybody?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, we have approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll offer approval of the bills.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And approval of the minutes from January 16th and January 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right. Well, next up, we have Kevin Kassenborg, District Manager of the Clay Soil and Water Conservation District. Kevin? Be giving us the annual department update.
Push your button there. There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First off, I'd like to introduce our two newest employees. As of last, middle of last year, we were able to hire two new individuals, and it's going to be fully staffed again. So Alyssa Schill is our district technician and will be the county ag inspector. So we'll be dealing with some of the upcoming meetings with township officials. And, excuse me, district technician Kyle Little. He's going to be kind of our jack-of-all-trades person. He'll be filling in on a lot of different duties. So I thought it would be good to bring those folks here. I know they've met a couple of, a couple of the commissioners at our board meetings, Paul and Jenny, but I thought it was good to meet the rest of you folks, too. So anyway, I guess we're forced to hire two individuals. It took a long time to get individuals hired, and I think we are in a climate where hiring people is not so easy anymore. So anyway, I'll jump into our program from 2023. I think most people realize that, associate us with the tree program. And last year, we had another successful year in 2023. Over 15,500 trees to 31 different landowners that we planted for, and over 120 hand-plant jobs that we did for individuals. We installed a little over 12 miles of matting. And you see on the picture up there, the left-hand side, there was a livestock protection planting over near the county landfill. The matting that we talk about is the black strips of fabric, which basically prevents weeds from popping up between the trees, but also allows moisture to go through. So 12 miles of that, basically from here to Buffalo River State Park, we put on last year. Good to have some young legs in the autumn. For this coming year, our program thus far has, we have over 9,300 trees sold, 20 machine planting jobs already, and we have 12 miles of matting already in the books. So like I say, it'll be good to have young folks here. The, another program that we participate with is the Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program. It's affectionately known as CREP. It's a combination of federal CRP and the state's RIM program. Ultimately, what happens if happening is landowner sign up for a CRP, 10 or 15-year contract, eventually rolls into a permanent easement with the RIM program. So like I said, we have a number of individuals that participated with that. Last year, two contracts were completed for a little over 315 acres. We continue to market and promote the program. For 2024, we have one ongoing program that's, or project that's in, it just takes some time to get the process through the recording of the documents. And for 207 acres, we potentially have others coming in as we progress throughout the year. We also participate in the DNR's walk-in access program. This allows public hunting on private land. Landowner enrolls parcels into the program. They receive a per-acre payment. It's a good opportunity to individuals that have land that is enrolled in the CREP program that is a permanent easement, it allows public hunting. And if you're, if you're a hunter and don't mind having others participate or hunt on your property, it's a good way to take some, some state funding from the DNR and put that towards even your property taxes. Presently, we have nine contracts in 2023 for 1,893 acres. For 2024, four contracts were re-enrolled, so we again have nine contracts on the books for that 1,893 acres. Some of the compliance programs that we participate with, the county ag inspector, of which Alyssa will be taking the reins on that this year, we deal with the state's noxious weed law. We yearly have township officer trainings. You can see on the bottom left there, we hold out in the field, actually, some of the weeds that are listed on the noxious weed list are items that many landowners and township officials really don't know what they look like. So we've had, last year, we had a poison hemlock meeting with town board officials. Previously, we've had some wild parsnips that have been showing up in a lot of our county road ditches and township road ditches, and we've held two different types of workshops for landowners to basically identify and hopefully identify some of these noxious weeds that are popping up in Clay County. We also proctored application licensing exams for individuals that are signing up to do spraying. We did 54 last year. And we have also now offer online testing. So the applicants receive an instant results whether they pass or fail. For 2024, we purchased some study guides there. Some of the more popular categories are the field crops, seed treatment, and turf and ornamentals. Normally, we request landowners that are going to be spraying and some of the commercial applicators to go to the University of Minnesota bookstore, purchase these study guides, and they're not cheap. And a lot of times, they only may be a one-time purchase. We decided some of the more popular, more common tests to order some of those, and we'll let the potential applicants maybe take those home. We haven't decided yet how much if we're going to charge, but like I say, rather than have them go to the bookstore, it'd be easier to have us in-house with us. We also deal with, continue to deal with landowner complaints throughout the county. So far, we've already given seven tests for the 2024 year. And the March Clay County Association of Township Officers, the 24 program presentation workshop, we will be giving, I should say, Alyssa will be giving a, what she's assured me to be an eye-opening presentation to those town board members. We also have the county feedlot offensive program. We're back in good standing with MPCA. At present, we have 77 registered feedlots in the county. We do compliance checks on 7% of those, which this year and last year was six. Six of those feedlots are inventoried. For 2024, continues to the same plan. The buffer law, we're in 100% compliance with that, which is, I think, a feather in our hat, as well as landowners and participating watershed districts to get those buffer strips installed. We are in charge of monitoring every year, a third of the county. So last year, we did, we've divided the county up in three different tiers, so east to west. We did the middle tier this past year. Right now, continuing our game plan, we'll be doing the southern third of this coming year. Wetland Conservation Act basically is a program, the state program, that requests or requires no loss of wetlands. We continue to have issues with the state's program and USDA's program, as they do not mesh very well. So there's a lot of, a lot of problems. The state's program has been around since 1991. The federal program was called Swamp Buster, has been around since 1985. And like I said, we still have problems making those two work as, very cohesively. It just, it doesn't work very well. We've had 36 distinct projects last year, with we had 118 contacts with landowners, and we see a lot more of that for 2024. Our no-till drill program continues to be very popular. In 1993, we, as board of supervisors on our SWCD board, purchased the first drill. We had 28 landowners rent the drills last year. We delivered to the sites to landowners during evenings and weekends. So it buys up our, one of our staff, one or two of our staffs, spring and fall, quite a bit for those delivering to the, to the landowner sites. 1,673 acres planted last year, and for 2024, we see much of the same. Minnesota Department of Ag, BEMP, Best Management Practices Low Interest Loan Program. In 1996, low-interest loans at 3% were offered to farmers, rural landowners, and agribusinesses. It basically allows a low-interest loan through a local lender for any type of a practice that would reduce pollution. In 2023, we had three loans were secured for over $91,000, all for conservation equipment. 3% interest rate apparently appears to be somewhat attractive again. For a long time, a lot of the dealers had 0% financing. We didn't have any, any activity, but all of a sudden, last year, 3% apparently looks pretty good on the market. For 2024, we had one request that's made thus far for a septic system upgrade and a water filtration system. We've had some lending issues with that, and I am hoping possibly, maybe we could pursue again with the county taking on, serving as a lender via adding property, these projects to their property taxes. And I know we had a meeting at one time a few years ago. It is something 30 to 35 counties do participate in that. And some of these, some of these landowners that, this, this couple that I'm talking about is a young family that having some lending issues. So we'll see where that goes. It's a shame to have a project that is in need out there to go unfulfilled. Pollinator habitat sites and projects in the county, hopefully, have all driven by Crestwood Pollinator Site that we planted a few years ago. I think it's starting to look, every year seems to improve. Some of the flowers are starting to show up a little more often. Education efforts through Morehead Community Education continues. We have evening workshops that we offer to participants, native plant ID classes, which we go out to the Crestwood site and actually take participants through the field and take a look and identify plants. We also have River Keepers Water Fest that we do in the fall. Last year, we had six days of 2,500 fourth graders that went through our, basically kind of rotate from station to station. And we held our fifth annual pint night last year. For 2024, we're working on the right side of the picture down there is the new Clay County Walk-In Public Access Project, which we'll be planting. I know, talking to some of the other county departments, maybe we need to come up with a newer name for that, and maybe something a little bit shorter, but maybe there's a contest in the making, I don't know. Other pollinator projects, DGF High School has got a project. They want to have a one-acre planting as kind of a science project to work with. We've also got a couple of private landowners that are on, are looking at doing some pollinator habitat also. And we have another pint night scheduled for April 25th, so mark your calendars, guys. One of the more exciting projects that has been in the, in the works the last couple of years, and I know the couple board members are on policy committees, so you guys know a little bit more of what some of these buffalo red and wild rice watershed projects have come into play. But since 2023, we've been funding, funding has been allowed for prioritizing, targeting, and installing some of these projects. Some of the examples are cover crops, water and sediment control basins, and side water limits that we have put in in the last year and a half. 20 projects were completed last year with 90% cost sharing allowed to landowners. Eight of those projects, we can take advantage of federal funding. So eight of the projects used federal dollars, $603,000 were, of cost of dollars, was spent in Clay County through our, through our, working with the NRCS office, 132,000 of federal funds, and 470,000 of our watershed funds were used for these projects. 2024, we have 12 projects on the books, a little over $625,000 cost of dollars already in the, in the works. New program coming down the road here. We're participating with the Wilkin, Grant, West Otter Tail, and Traverse Counties in something called an RCPP, a Regional Conservation Partnership Program. We'll enter into contracts with landowners for practices such as, we're seeing up there, some cover crops, no till, and minimum till. It's kind of an exciting time to work with a number of different counties. Also in 2024 is an election year. We have three SWCD supervisor terms that expire at the end of the year. We'll get some refilers. Once again, it's always a pleasure to come here and speak with you, with you. Glad to let you know what we got planned for, what we had last year, and what we got in the works for this coming year. I have a good board of supervisors, county board is fun to work with, and I also want to thank our staff. I think we have a good group to work with and look forward to a coming year. Any questions?
Hey, Frank.
On those watershed projects, do we wait for the farmers to request something to be done, or do we go out and look for projects to do?
Kind of some of both. There's, some of these projects have been, you know, problem sites that we've known for a number of years. Now with additional funding, a lot of these projects are very expensive. So 90% cost sharing is the best game that I know in town. That's a pretty good deal for these guys. So if we can piggyback, if we can leverage federal funds on top of our state funds, definitely makes our dollars go a lot further. But like I say, these projects, some of them are known, a lot of them have been coming in from landowners that have put in a project, and somebody, a farmer, maybe next-door neighbor, knows that this is going on and comes to us wondering what kind of a project is. So these water and sediment control basins are really catching on, especially in the eastern part of the county where we have more rolling topography.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, one, again, thank you and the staff for being such a resource for our residents to talk to about items coming up. I really do think we should continue the dialogue about the potential for the borrowing component. You know, landowners that are reaching out to you for that specific program, those components are required really for the safety and health of the community as well. And so I think it really does serve to benefit the greater good when we talk about that. So hope that maybe we can continue those discussions. But just want to talk a little bit about an observation for the work that you do. I know that a lot of these conservation programs came about during, during a Dust Bowl, and in a time when we really saw a lot of our topsoil disappearing. But in a year where we don't have a lot of snow, it is really important for folks to observe when you're driving in the rural areas, or maybe even not so rural, maybe some of our southern and northern bordering roads, that, that beautiful oil-looking topsoil that is now a layer in ditches and sidewalks and the like, that really is starting to blow because there's not really anything to reduce the wind that, that is causing it to blow. But if you, if you have an opportunity to drive by some of these newer homes in the rural area that have planted trees, it doesn't take much to reduce that, that soil from blowing. And so you can see very clearly thick, thick layers of topsoil that have, that have blown into the ditch that are going to wash into the Red River. It's going to be a sediment issue. But then you drive by these new yards, and then it's, it's basically stopped the dirt from blowing. So understanding that sometimes when you farm large portions of ground, it's, it's maybe a nuisance to drive around trees, but once that topsoil is gone, it's gone. And I recall being at a Red River Basin Control, or Red River Basin Commission Conference once, where you talked about the amount of topsoil that has been lost over the last 20 years, and it is a substantial amount, in inches, measurable inches. So I, one, thank you for the tree program, it's been great. But two, the work that you continue to do, I think as we become more aware about that topsoil leaving, hopefully, residents will reach out more and work in collaboration to mitigate that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? Paul?
I don't know if it's, again, just echo comments, adding Alyssa and Kyle to the staff has been tremendous over the last year, watching them grow and work. And that all came through new state funds, building district capacity to do that, which is building into a lot of extra grant opportunities that services Clay and counties around us. That would never happen without, you know, those, right? You couldn't do the work. And the other thing, much like, I think, in working with our watershed districts, that ability to have now through these grants and watershed one plan, more collaboration with our counties that surround, which, you know, water and soil doesn't have boundaries. And so to work collectively, it's just moving quickly in the right direction, so.
Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for the good work you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, Justin Sorem, our county engineer, has got a number of items. First one is approved to reduce retainage to 1% on SAP 014-601-009.
Yes, good morning. So I'm here to request approval to reduce retainage on SAP 14-601-009. So this is the North Broadway Bridge removal. So all of the major contract items have been completed to both the satisfaction of Clay County and the city of Fargo. The only, the only reason this one isn't being finalized out is we have to wait for vegetation to be established.
Any questions for Justin?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Next, we have a request for approval of out-of-state travel for Assistant County Attorney.
County Engineer.
County Engineer. Sorry. Brought Mr. Melton's head up.
If you want to. So back in December, I came to you guys for approval for myself to attend this conference. So this is approval for Alex to go at that time. He hadn't started yet, so I didn't feel it was appropriate to ask for permission for two. So this is something that's budgeted, and the conference runs from April 15th through the 19th.
I'll offer approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
California. Good, good move. Next, we have a request of approval of letter of support for Cassaw 36 bridge replacement.
Yes, so Polk County's taken the lead on, there's two different grants that we're trying to apply for. So there's a group of three bridges along the Red River, which incorporates Clay County, Norman County, Polk County, and Minnesota, and then Cass County and Trail County in North Dakota. So the two grants that we're trying to take advantage of are, one, the bridge investment program, and two, the raise grant application. So if successful, the bridge replacements would be funded with 80% federal funds, and this would require a 10% local match from Minnesota and North Dakota. So there would also be, if we were successful, there would be bridge bonding opportunity and IIJA matching funds. So although in the letter, we're saying Cassaw regular, there would be a chance that it wouldn't all be Cassaw regular, there'd be different funds available to cover our 10%. And this is the, if you're familiar with Georgetown at all, it's the old Trust Bridge just north of Georgetown that, I think it would be an awesome opportunity if we were successful in getting funding. And this is probably the second time since I've been county engineer that we've written letters of support trying to get this funded.
Kevin?
Yeah, so just in the local, are these federal grants?
Correct.
Okay, and so would the local share come out of MINDOT, or would?
So right now, so we'd be required to, so it's 80/20, so 10% us, 10% Cass County. So it could either come out of Cassaw regular, but a lot of times, bridge bonding kicks in to get you to that 10%.
Okay, so our goal would be that, because if we use, if we use the Cassaw, I don't know what dollar amounts we're talking about here on a proposed.
So right now, it'd be about a $10 million bridge, so eight, eight million in federal, one million in Cass County, one million in Clay County.
Yeah, I guess my, I guess my issue there is if it's Cassaw dollars, and we've already established a five-year plan, how does, how does that kind of, how would that work? What would we have to do in that regard?
You would have to shift it, obviously, if we were to use Cassaw regular, but I would be fairly confident we could get some sort of.
Bridge bonding?
Bridge bonding.
Any other questions?
I just don't, on this bridge in particular, I don't see any other way that we'd get funding.
Sure.
Other than federal.
Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, given the discussion we've had regards, in regards to replacement of bridges and the substantial cost that these bridges are to replace, and how that can really disrupt a five-year plan, or twenty-year plan for that matter, you know, I really do support moving forward on, on this Highway 36 bridge replacement for the, for the main reason that if you're able to leverage $8 million in federal funds on a approximately $10 million project, that really seems to make sense. I agree with Commissioner Campbell, there are some, some internal workings that we need to figure out in regards to how it affects the rest of the five-year plan. Certainly, if you're able to find bridge bonding dollars to pay for it, it seems to make sense. So I would make a motion of support, sending both letters of support for the project.
I'll second that with another question, if I can.
Go ahead.
So on, on the bridge that we would cost share with, what are the daily traffic counts, the ADTs? What are?
It's less than 500. It is, so on the North Dakota side, it is a gravel road. Our side is paved. So very low in comparison to a lot of other roads that we have. But the, one of the reasons that this one would be a good application is the detour. Obviously, there's not a lot of, so one thing that goes into a bridge replacement is looking at if you can't go across there, where would be the next place?
Right.
About a 15-mile detour on this one.
Yeah, that's, and it, would a new bridge be built to allow for ag crossing?
That's correct. It'd be built to current standards. Right now, it is restricted, and it's the old Trust Bridge, where it's also limited vertically to where big farm equipment can't cross it right now.
I do know we have some producers that go back and forth.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's also one thing that we're looking into, is getting letters of support from those producers, from the city of Georgetown and local businesses that utilize both sides of the river.
Okay. Very good.
Any other questions? We have a motion, don't we?
Yeah, just, so do we, do we apply for bridge bonding after we've received?
Yep, we can't do anything until, no.
Okay.
And in the past, MINDOT and the bridge, the guy who's kind of in charge of bridge bonding has been supportive of this project and said he would kick in funds if we were successful.
Very good.
Okay. Have a motion, motion and a, and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Passes. Next, request for approval to advertise for SB 014-614-001.
Yes, so this is requesting approval to advertise for the project number you mentioned. So this is the bridge over the Buffalo on Cassaw 14, just west of the Glendon Piler. This is one that we've been working on for a long time, and we did get federal funding for this one and bridge bonding as well. So I'm requesting permission to advertise with the proposed letting date of March 12th.
Move approval.
A motion, second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy and Kathy? Request approval of status changes for the detox employees.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Troy's just handing out the salary wage calculations for these positions. So I request to move an LPN, who is working currently as a variable hour position. She's really taking on a lot more shifts than variable hour, just because of our need to have nurses on every shift with our withdrawal management, excuse me. So we really need her currently to move up to a .6, and certainly, that will carry over when we get into that new facility, but we're going to run into trouble with using the variable hour as many hours as we need her for. She works the PM and night shift, so that's a high need. So that request is to move her to .6 from variable hour, and I have the. from variable hour, and I have the, the withdrawal management funds that we can bill now. Will cover the expenses for that change for her benefits. As you can see on the, on the sheet, it's around the $20,003.05. Plus, we have some open positions that cover that as well. Would you like me to go into the second one, Mr. Chair? Okay. And then we are also requesting, we have an administrative support person currently that works for Detox, and there's just higher level needs that we have with withdrawal management. We have requirements for state data. We also have additional requirements for billing and going through all of the clients. That withdrawal management is just a higher level requirements for administrative support. So she's doing much more than what we currently had. We changed her PDQ to reflect the changes in her job duties, and so that would be a move to a grade 12 from a grade 10, just based on the, what we consider a case aid in the county. They're listed on grade 12. So again, the openings that we have in Detox will cover that adjustment of salary, which is really, the difference is about $2,500 for this year.
Do you have any questions for Kathy?
When we move some, yeah, when we move someone up, do we have to open that position up to everybody? Or can we just take one person and upgrade her?
Are you talking for the variable hour position, the LPN?
The second one you were talking about.
Oh, the, the second one, she's already working in, in the capacity, just covering all of Detox. It's just becoming a higher level.
I realize, but the first time you advertised it, you advertised as a level 10, right? Or steps?
She.
Grade 10.
Yeah, she's been with us for a few years now. So yeah, there's not another internal person that would be working in this capacity.
Yeah, I, I support all this. I'm just kind of interested, as we start to get closer to this facility opening up, is there, is there a way that you can provide us maybe some sort of a business operations type of a funding structure so that we can see a full scope of expenses and then where the revenues come from? I know, I know we're going to have the opportunity to be able to bill and get, get those additional funds, but I, I know on your budget process, you gave us an overall picture for 2024, but I'm kind of, a numbers guy, I'm kind of interested in, in seeing what, for lack of a better term, of business operations of, of that facility and, and how it's going to, what it boils down to is how much levy dollars are going to be needed to help fund that. That's really where my question ends up coming.
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell. We, we do have that broken down in, in our hiring template that we're going to do this year. We presented some of that to the PIC, but yes, we will be coming to the board. We can do that potentially next week.
I, it's, I guess just so, at some point, I'd just like to see that plan.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? We have a motion?
Got a motion to approve.
No, second.
A motion.
With those three items that were, are listed.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Sloan of our Information Services Department, or the Director, got the annual department update.
There we are. Good morning. I am honored and proud to be here today to talk to you about what we've been up to and what we're going to be doing. I represent the GIS and Communications Department, which formerly was known as Information Services. We changed our name effective 1-1-2024 to better fit what we're doing now, and I'll go over some of that, and you'll see how that kind of plays into exactly what we're up to. We have two different divisions that really in our organization, the GIS side and the communications side, and we're housed at the Government Center. These are the wonderful staff in our department. We have three full-time staff, and we have two variable hour positions. The GIS technician has got, we have a person working there, right, and our multimedia technician position is vacant at this time. But without these wonderful folks, I wouldn't look as good as I do around here, that's for sure. So I really am grateful for all that they do for us. All right, so on the GIS side, there's a huge list of things that we do. So the, the, one of the big things that we do is, you know, maintain all of the map datas and all that kind of stuff we're doing. But we also are responsible for addressing in Clay County. In 2023, we generated 210 new addresses throughout the county, and one of the other projects we work on, we're responsible for these, the little blue house number signs you see out in the rural county. Those were originally installed in the late 1990s, and they have a lifespan of about 20 years. So we've been working over the last several years to replace them countywide. We work in partnership with the Highway Department Sign Division, and they do the installation work for us. And come this spring, we'll have replaced all 4,000 of those signs. So that puts us in a good position over time to keep those signs visible and working well. Couple other things that we do, our GIS staff hosts something called the McJissa Tea Time. McJissa is the Minnesota County GIS Association, and we host every other week, so like this afternoon, we'll have one. It's a one-hour Teams meeting that all the GIS people in all the counties in Minnesota are invited to, and it's just a little forum where you can come, you can join, and we talk about whatever issue we may have, be having. Since counties all do similar things, it's been a really good resource. We started it last summer, and we average anywhere from 20 to 40 counties represented each other week when we get together, and the staff across the state have found it really a super useful tool. But Clay County is the host for that. We also are responsible for the PLSS, or the Public Land Survey System Remonumentation Program, that we have underway throughout our county, and we oversee that and how that works. And this year, we're going to be applying for a grant, which I'll talk about in a little bit. All right, some examples of what we've been up to this last year. The big one, of course, is Next Generation 911. The Next Generation 911 system uses GIS data as its core to figure out how to identify where the call is coming from and how to put, send responders to that call. It's something that, in Minnesota, we've been working on for a very long time. We started in Clay County on it in 2017. We did most of that work in-house, but late last year, we hired some contractor, a contractor to help us out. Next Generation 911 data consists of road center line data, address point data, emergency service zone data, and we go through a very lengthy, complex process to validate that data for use in the Next Generation 911 system. I'm exceedingly pleased to tell you that we are done. We are all complete. I put this map up here because this is the map of shame that they've been showing us for years, and we are finally dark blue. So it's, it's a happy day, I'm here to tell you.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Actually, as of this Friday, we'll have, we'll have every single step finished. So it was a huge lift for us to get done, but we have finished it. And that's a pretty amazingly good thing. A couple of things we've done this last year, we rolled out the Emergency FEMA Maps application. It was done during flood season in the spring, when we have road damage. It's a, it, there's this dashboard that our staff can go to, and then they also have an application on their cell phone they use, and they can go, actually go out there and take pictures of the damaged road section, and it puts it on the map. And then people like our emergency manager or our Highway Department folks can look and see where those, what they are, what they look like, and it gives them a really efficient way of keeping track of the damage so that when they have to file the FEMA reports, they're able to get all the information they need. So it made it a much simpler way of collecting that data, storing it, and looking at it. So it was a, something we spooled it up last spring, and it's been, it was a really useful tool, and we'll do some more of that kind of stuff. This next year, one of the things we'll be looking at is a new application for our sign department, the Highway Sign Guys. Right now, they have a computerized program for doing their sign inventory. We're going to look at a new one that uses their cell phone, and it will be much easier for them to actually keep track of what signs are where. And that's one of the big projects we'll be rolling out. Last year, we also spooled up a new gravel pit inspection application. This includes a map application that displays the gravel pit information and allows our planning and zoning staff direct access to start an inspection out in the field. By selecting the pit, they can simply click on a button, and it opens the inspection application on their mobile device. So it makes what they're doing out there much more efficient and easy to do. Public Health came to us, and they had a need for people to be able to go online and find out where there was child and teen checkup services available to them, depending where they were. And this was actually done in the four-county area. We put that as an online map, so they just enter their address, and it will show them, or they can use their phone, and it will just show them where they are and what, what services are nearest to them. Facilities management has been a big undertaking that we've been doing in GIS. Buildings, floor plans, tenant spaces, were all just the tip of the iceberg. We, the access to the data through GIS has been instrumental in planning of remodels, improvement projects, and other activities. So we've been starting to put lots of different parts of our facilities into the GIS, as kind of its own mapping system. Everything, and you'll see here in some of these pictures how we've got some of that different stuff. GIS staff continue to focus on developing other aspects of the facilities management and to help with capital planning, assessment management, or asset management, streamlining of workflows. We mapped everything from building structures, elements, to safety assets, evac routes, wireless access points, heating and cooling assets, door numbers, tenant info, and parking lots, landscape areas. If it exists, we pretty much have put it onto a map layer so that the folks in the Facilities Department can have access to that and do, keep track of some of those things. Integration of the facilities management data has taken most of our GIS technicians' time for the last four years. We've been working on this. That's not something we did before, but it's a new piece that we've added, and it's been very beneficial, but it is now a constant part of what we're doing. There's a lot more we want to do with this, and we'll continue working toward that. Here's some more of some of the maps that we've done for them. Okay, let's me move to the next division, which is Communications. Catch up with my notes. All right. So the Communications Division does a whole bunch of stuff, too. One of the big ones, of course, is broadcasting meetings, which we're doing right now. One of our staff, Tim, is over in the little room across the hall, and he's making sure this is going out live on our social media platforms, as well as we archive these meetings and keep a copy of them. Another thing we do is our website is probably one of the bigger things we do. To promote our website, we have, we produce pens, we purchase pens, we give out to people. I gave you each a pen, so you'll know where our website address is. In 2023, our main website received an average of 80,000 visits a month. Our communications staff worked diligently to ensure the information on the website was current and accurate, and a redesign of the ClayCountyMN.gov website was started in an effort to enhance usability. The redesign will go live on March 5th of this year, so a month from now. Additional enhancements were made to our website to ensure that we are fully compliant with all disability standards. So we added some more functionality last year to make sure that everything we're doing is meeting all the, all of the standards and guidelines that we, that there are. All right, so on our website, I mentioned we got about 80,000 average. In January 2024, our website received 94,000 views, so a tremendous amount of traffic. The most popular page is our inmate roster, which hit a little more than 20,000 views. So when people come to us, that's what they want to know is who we have in our jail. The next most popular pages were property information search and the Department of Motor Vehicles. This is how our current, the, the top of our current homepage looks right now. If you go out there right now, you'll see this. This has been around for the last five years. It's been since we've redesigned. So today, I'm going to give you a sneak peek of how it's going to look a month from now. This is, this is the new look of how our website's going to be. It's laid out differently. It's the same exact information. It's just we've restructured how it's laid out. We've changed how it looks, what the colors are, and how it functions to try to make it even more efficient and more, a better, better resource for our staff and our citizens to go to. March 5th is still the hopeful date that this will go live, and I'll be probably back then with great fanfare and celebration. Part of the redesign, what we came out of the redesign is something called a color palette, which is the colors we use on the website. This is what those are and what it looks like. What that will also do for us is it allows us to use that color scheme in other things that we do. A good example of that is our newly redesigned business cards, with it's, with a new layout and a new color scheme to them that match what our colors are, and we'll, you'll see that in more of our printed materials and our online things, and you'll, you'll start seeing those colors slowly change so that they match. And what we're working toward is a more of a consistent look throughout all of our materials. Here are some examples of some of the stuff that the GIS and Communications staff created. They have a bunch of graphic arts products, including signs, brochures, displays, and videos. Of special note is a video that we created that explains where your garbage goes. So if you want to see that, it's just go to our website, to the solid waste section. It's a pretty interesting video. It starts with a garbage can at the side of a street here in Moorhead, and goes all the way to the landfill and the perm incinerator. So it's, it's a pretty interesting thing. Some of the other things you see up here are everything that we've, we do a tremendous variety of different products that we're producing all the time. So pretty much anything you see out there that's got Clay County on it, we probably touched it in some way, shape, or form. One of the things I wanted to talk a little bit about is our digital signage. We use digital signage solutions in 11 locations now. This last year, we spooled up, I think we had three new ones in 2023. I have on these next slides screenshots of each and every one of those. These is like the Law Enforcement Center Lobby, the Family Service Center Lobby, the Family Service Center Meeting Rooms, and the Public Health WIC Clinic are these ones here. The next ones are our Correctional Facility Lobby, third floor, right here. And, oh, we've got a couple, one, one we got is in the Juvenile Detention Center. They actually run those are inside the pods, and they are used to deliver information to the residents, I guess. Stuff like menus and information that they need. And the one in the bottom left is a really interesting solution we came up with. It's a digital signage solution that actually displays, on one part of the screen, it displays who they have in their holding cells, but on the left-hand side, it's got some information slides that run for new resident, new inmates, I guess you'd call them, people. There, and there's an actual video that we produced that runs that's two and a half minutes long that explains how to be an inmate in our jail. And they, so when they're broadcasting, they're bringing them into booking, they're standing there in the booking room, they, those people watch that video, and it tells them a lot about how to do that. But it's an interestingly different kind of thing. Lastly, the last digital signage ones, we did put one up outside a veteran's office. We've got one that's, you'll see them on a motor vehicle, that actually show who's being served at which window. And the bottom right one is something newest. There's probably our newest solution, which is one for our employees. It, it's, right now, it's in the break room with the Government Center, but we also display this digital signage solution on our employee internet site, so that we can put information there for them to see. One of the things we'll be working on soon would be on all of these digital signage applications is delivering our emergency notification system stuff, our notifications, to those digital signs. So it'd come up right on the digital signs that if there's some sort of emergency taking place. All right. What are we doing? Oh, here, this is what we're going to be doing this next year. So we're redesigning our website. I've talked about that before. We're going to be implementing the county code, which you may have heard of. As Planning and Zoning is working on their section, we also have another effort underway to update the rest of the county code, and we're going to be moving our, how, how that's stored online is going to be changing this year. Hopefully, make it much better and easier to search and maintain. It's something we've been working for a very long time to, for a solution, and I'm hopeful this summer we'll get there. We're going to be producing a whole bunch of training videos for our staff on a lot of different topics. Of course, we're going to deliver our GIS data to the NG911. We're going to revamp some of our online maps. We're going to revamp some of our online maps. We've got some more facilities management stuff we want to do. And the other big one is we're going to apply for this PLS remonumentation grant that's available in Minnesota. That just came out on February 1st is when we were able to download the grant materials. I started digging through that. We'll meet with our contracted county surveyor this week to talk about that, and I'll be back here in the next few weeks to talk to you. I'll need a resolution from you to approve that we apply for that grant. So you'll see me again talking about that, but we're going to be working quite hard on that. Our letter intent is due 22nd of this month, and the whole thing's due beginning of April, so we'll move through this pretty quickly. But hopefully, we'll get some good money out of that, and we'll be able to expand how much remonmentation effort we can do. That's our goal for this year. In summary, I'd like to say that we're doing, I think, a lot of really wonderful things. Our staff are being asked to more, be, do, do more and more, and we are running out of staff hours. Specifically, we're full. We're at the point now where some projects are delayed, or we have to maybe say, you know, we can't do that. So this summer, I might be back to ask for more staff time when we talk budgets. I don't exactly know how that will look yet, but it may be another variable hour. It may be expanding, instead of variable hour, expanding it, but we'll research those things in the coming months, and I'll come back and tell you what options I may have. With that, do anybody have any questions about what we're up to?
Mark, when you're going back to your next generation 911 and the first part you were talking about there. So you do all this, and of course, that dispatch also uses that material, right?
Yes.
Can, do, do you use Google Maps, or what do you use for, for that? It's an own, it's its own internal?
Yes, it's, we're using, the software uses, it's from a company called ESRI, and it's our own internal data.
So how, how do, how does that get updated when there's changes to roads and new construction?
We do that, our staff do that.
You do that, okay.
Yes. So every new address that's added, we add that in there. Every new road that's changed or modified, we adjust all those.
Right, as it opens, okay.
Yes. And we actually will have, right in there now, we have preliminary road, stuff that's planned but not built. You know, as like a new plat would come in, we'll put all that into the system, but it shows up as preliminary, and as they build it, we'll turn it active, and it'll start showing up. Right now, the way the 911 system works is, you know, our dispatch center over Triple RDC uses our data now, but it's, City of Fargo comes every month, every month, on the fifteenth a month, takes our GIS data, takes it over there, puts it in their maps. And that's for them to just to view. The big difference with, with Next Gen 911 is the data actually goes from us to the state, where it's assembled into a big wide state data set, is pushed through the Next Gen 911 system back to regional dispatch. The flow of the data will be different, and that's why we had to make sure our stuff not only meets all those criteria, but we have to make sure it matches everything else in all the, all the other counties.
So, so do the cities do their own?
No, it's only counties that are providers for that.
You know, and I bring this up, you know, you get into some of the major areas where there's multiple lanes, and you're trying to get someplace, and, and it, you know, the technology now is, you know, if you want to get there, get in this lane or whatever. Is it, is it that sophisticated in our end, too?
Yes. Yeah. And like I mentioned before, we keep all the, like, our road center lines is in our data. A patch that are 68 attributes, and those attributes include everything from low address to high address to speed, to how many lanes there are, to, there's a tremendous amount of information there that are used by different systems, but, as well as the emergency service numbers, so they know who to send for a response. But yeah, it's a lot of stuff that we keep track of.
We're, we're not as, compared to major metropolitan areas, you know, it's not quite a, traffic isn't quite as significant here. I just came back from a place where it was a lot more traffic, and I just happened to notice their, their Google vehicle was going around doing all their updates. It's pretty interesting. It's good stuff.
It is, and one of the things we struggle with is, like, in Minnesota, the counties are called the authoritative source for GIS data. So if they want to get current stuff, it comes from us, and that's parcels, roads, addresses. We provide that to everybody else. Big data companies like Google don't always get it directly from us, and we struggle sometimes with getting corrections made over at those things. And one of the efforts that the state is working on right now is, once they compile this stuff into a statewide data set, they're going to be able to provide it to these big data companies like Google and Bing and those works, and make it much easier so we can keep that data more current. That's what we're always struggling with, to get current, accurate data out to whoever needs it.
That's where my question was going to.
Yes, always are trying to.
How, how update is it?
Yes, and we, we actually have, we have a system in place where, like, with, in Google Maps, we can actually provide input to them to say, hey, you have a mistake, and this is what it should be. We do that now, but it's pretty cumbersome compared to how we want it to be, want it to be more automated.
We did, just to reflect the importance of what your team has been doing, we spent some of the public safety funding that was provided by the state to help you finish up the 911.
Yes.
Next gen, and it's money well spent.
Thank you.
It's really critical that we have this information, and that you have the staff, and we have the resources to, to maintain it. So I'm grateful for that, and it's good to see here, as quick as we got to the money, you got the job done, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do want to, and I think I, I think I might have mentioned to you, Mark, that at our, at our annual AMC conference, we had somebody who was representing all of the GIS in the state, and, and you got high marks from, from those folks at that booth. They, they said, oh, you must know Mark Sloan. I said, yeah, we know him.
Yeah, yeah.
If you've gotten any sales pitches from them.
So anyway, you, I think you're, you've impressed your colleagues throughout the state on, on your, what you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark, and thank you to your team.
You're welcome. I'm lucky to have such good folks.
Next up, Rory Schmidt, Technology Service Director. Annual update of his department.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Today, I'll be covering my department update. Just to kind of get a layout, I have a great staff of eight, underneath four computer support specialists, four systems administrators, and there's often times that these staff work after hours, nights, weekends, and they definitely don't get enough credit for, for those hours that they do put in. So I appreciate that, their dedication to our department to make sure the county runs as efficiently as it does. A couple stats here, up to around 630 employees across 23 buildings. Our IT personnel to staff ratio has increased slightly since last year, just due to those staff increases, and we'll see that more later this year, too, with our couple new buildings opening. So with that 1 to 78 staff ratio, that is pretty high compared to our peers across the state. But we, we manage, we maintain, we get creative ways to make sure our, you know, things get done here at the county IT-wise, and, you know, whether that's cloud-based hosting of things, different services, solutions, we do maintain. But with the new, some new state and criminal justice policies and requirements, it's starting to, starting to stretch us a little thin here, but we're confident we can think of creative ways to address that. End-user devices, desktops, laptops, that's up slightly since last year. Landline phones is pretty static with the cellphones as well. Active assets has, has increased. Our department manages all the IT assets for the county, specifically to maintain our MCIT insurance coverage as well, just to make sure we have our bases covered in case something happens, in case there's even a, let's just say, a vehicle, let's just say, a sheriff's office vehicle, or any vehicle that has IT equipment in it gets in an accident, you know, we can replace those, we track those assets, we can deprecate them, and we do a very good job of keeping up on that over the last few years. Just kind of show you the last few years here of different, different requests, tickets, visitor counts, calls into our office. They're, they're starting to level off a little bit here, but pretty static overall the last couple of years here. Cost per employee, so as we onboard new employees with the county, 23 and 24, they're pretty much static as far as hardware cost goes. Annual expenses, those would be different services, licensing costs, things like that. We've, we've seen a slight increase from last year to this year, and that, that seems to be pretty much the norm across, across the industry. Additional costs, as we're standing up new buildings or remodeling, additional networking, equipment, switches, wireless access points, just all that kind of extra stuff behind the walls that we don't really consider during a remodel, but those, those are extra costs to consider as we onboard new employees and new office space areas. Upcoming projects and recent projects, security has definitely bumped us to the top of the list here, so we've, we've pushed back a few projects from late last year, and those might get delayed till later this year or even, even next year. But our main focus right now this year is to start rolling out security measures. We're going to be having a small discussion with the management team on Wednesday to run over a few, few ideas and start, start implementing those, those ideas and get them out to all the county staff. Every few years, we'll do a cell phone comparison with, you know, right now, we're currently with Verizon. We've been going through a little proof of concept with T-Mobile, just to see what cost comparisons are, what the coverages are. We're, we're still in the middle of that. Initial tests have showed that they have kind of the data speeds that we're, that we're looking for. Primarily, the main focus would be our criminal justice, our law enforcement, sheriff's deputies that are out, out in the field, out in the county, all day, every day, so that, that's really the, the highest precedence on who we choose as a cell provider. So the next project we have coming up here is wireless access point upgrades, and that, that'll actually be my next agenda item to discuss and bring forth to you. But outside of that, just a lot of state requirements, BCA requirements, that have been, kind of been pushing down on each of us counties, so. A lot of, a lot of the counties are in the same boat as we are. Fortunately for us, I mean, our, our board here recognizes a lot of these needs, and you guys are pretty forthcoming on support for that, so it's, it's good to see that. Some of our peer counties aren't, aren't as lucky as that, so thank you for that. Any questions?
When we put in a new building, you do all the wiring, or is that contracted out?
Contracted through the building project, but, you know, as the building's open, once, once it goes live, then, then we're responsible to hire a contractor or, you know, somebody to come in and add additional wiring. We work, we work pretty closely with the maintenance facilities department on that.
Do you have any part in the planning as far as when they're designed?
Yep. Yep, I do attend the, I've been attending the, the new detox meetings and new DMB meetings as well.
Yeah, there, yeah, there are certain portions of that where, where we, when we plan these buildings, too, we, we take into consideration who our current contracts are with, and that type of things for, and probably more on the security side than, than some of the other things that you do within there. But I, I think we want to make sure that when we do those buildings, that what we bid out is compatible, so that the current company that we have, that we contract with for, for the operations of that is, is there. So that's always taken into consideration. Mr. Chair, I, I don't have another question, but I have a, a couple of comments. You've had a busy few months.
We have, yes.
And I, I just, I just, you know, really wanted to acknowledge and thank you for, you mentioned at the very beginning that you sometimes have, your staff has to work nights and weekends, and, and I think you've all put in an awful lot of time in the last four or five months for some things that may have been unexpected. And I just, you know, I think, I just, I certainly want to thank you for your, for what you've done and, and staying focused, but yet not letting it interfere with other things. So thank you for what you've done.
Not an ideal situation, but we, we appreciate that.
And now that I've said that, my laptop just died. So I guess I'm talking to the right guy.
Yes, yes. Upon and after.
Seriously, it just died. I can't get it to come on.
It's really powerful.
Any other comments? No, Rory, we appreciate it, and just echo Commissioner Campbell's sentiments. We've all seen how responsive and professional and available your team's been, and we're grateful for it. We're lucky to have you with Clay County.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, now, on to the next. Okay, now that we've puffed you up, you've got an ask.
Yep, yep.
It'll be, request approval to purchase replacement wireless access points.
Yeah, so the wireless access points, if, if you're not aware, that, that's what produces the, the Wi-Fi coverage in all of our buildings. So today, I'm here to request a replacement of some older equipment in a few of our buildings, primarily the law enforcement center and courthouse are a good bulk of these, the need here. So we received three quotes. The first one is $38,373 through High Point Networks. The other two came in at $40,407.25 from SHI and $41,844.14 from CDW. So today, the request would be to make them, you know, make a motion to approve the lowest quote there for $38,373.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the replacement at that lowest bid of $38,373.
I'll say it.
A motion second, any discussion?
Did your Internal Service Fund cover it?
Sorry, say that again.
Did the Internal Service Fund cover?
These particular ones are not on Internal Services.
Oh, they're not?
But this is something we're, we're going to add to it.
Okay.
But we, we would have some miscellaneous Internal Services funds from other, other equipment that either we did not replace, so we could be using funds for that.
Good question. No, I just said a good question.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we've got County Administrator Larson, request approval to advertise and hire for social service director position due to an upcoming retirement.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Thank you. This morning is actually kind of a bittersweet day. While it was not, not anticipated, doesn't change the, change the issue nonetheless. This, recently, Rhonda Porter has indicated that she is planning to retire this summer, June 28th of '24 will be her last, last work day, and, and we've been fortunate to have Ms. Porter for, for the last 32-plus years. She's provided excellent leadership. She's, her institutional knowledge is unmatched, and not only from a leadership standpoint within the county, but also region and statewide, and certainly is, is going to be missed. We have started the, the discussion with Ms. Porter and also the pick committee, looking at a timeline. Essentially, we, due to the size of her budget and the complexity of, of her programs, we felt it important that there be an overlap. What we're proposing to the commission today would be an eight-week overlap. We kind of did a backward planning piece, and so we're here this morning. We would look to advertise for, for three weeks. As a full board, you would have the opportunity to all review and score the applications. all review and score the applications. We would look to do, conduct interviews the week of the 8, March 18th. Again, we would request that all five commissioners be present at those, at the interviews, and then we would be looking to make a higher date on the 26th. The schedule does have some flexibility. If it doesn't exactly work out the way that we have planned here, we do have some gaps that will still allow for that eight-week overlap, and so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve. This is, as you said, bittersweet. We hate to see Rhonda go, and there's some big shoes to fill here, but we have good internal people. We have lots of people on the outside. This is a very desirable position, so I would anticipate we'll have a good pool of people to select from, and the two-month overlap is vital. Kevin?
Yeah, I had an opportunity this morning. You sent us a copy of her letter, and her letter was full of the professionalism and class that is Rhonda, and she, in her resignation, she just acknowledged her professionalism throughout her time as being the leader in social services, and I'm going to be sorry to see her go. But with that, I would move to approve the advertising and hiring schedule for the social service director position.
I would offer a reluctant second.
And could we include, would that motion include backfill?
Yes.
Any other comments? If not all in favor of the motion, indicate with aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right. We will move on to committee reports. Commissioner Campbell, you can start us off. Well rested.
Okay, you're going to do that to me. Okay, on January 23rd, I think we've got to go back two weeks here, January 23rd, we had a highway tracking committee meeting. Talked about the auto state travel issues going on, the bid letting schedule of CASA 1 and 26, and CASA 14 bridge replacement, and some box culverts are going to be let in April. He did bring forward to us other ways of funding options, including local option sales taxes for roads. I think that, I think through our committee, we decided at this point in time that probably wouldn't be a direction we'd be interested in going. And then there was an RFP for the Glendon Township Bridge, and we are in the process of establishing our next five-year plan, along with the annual, I think we're going to, I think Commissioner Gross and I will be dealing with Ann and going over the stuff to come up with the annual maintenance contracts that the townships have to approve and establish by their annual meeting in March. So, we will be working on that before that. We had a presentation and a discussion with the diversion authority with Chris Baki-Guard and Peggy Harder regarding MOUs that are going to be required throughout the year, not just within the city limits, that are going to need to have the 37-foot threshold for being able to operate. And then I did attend the planning commission meeting on the 23rd. Commissioner Gross was , oh, leave that up to him to give the report. He acted as our voting delegate that evening. On the 24th, I attended the Prairie Lake Solid Waste Meeting. Operations going well. I've been reporting about where we've been behind in our tonnage deliveries. That number now, as of, at the time of that last meeting, was down to, I believe it was 124 tons short. So, we really, compared to when it was like 1300 or 1400, we've really gained and caught up in that regard. Had a little bit of information regarding the alcohol and tobacco, updating the policies based on the new legislation, and so we basically went with, continued to go with what Otter Tail County had in that regard. And there was a proposal to create a new ash disposal agreement, and it's something that I questioned why we had to have a new ash disposal agreement when it's just, it's been within our budget process anyway, that we budget so much. This was, it was requested on behalf, by Otter Tail County. At this point in time, I think the other counties didn't really see a need for it, but I do have what was going to be their proposal in a draft form, and I guess I'd like to, if I could give it, Brian, to, if you could look at it to see if you would see any concerns on behalf of Clay County if they decide they want to. There was no, I think, you know, they just thought it would, they were, it was recommended by their staff that they have it, and so I just thought, if I could port that, that'd be great. Then on Thursday morning, the 25th, we had a solid waste advisory committee meeting. We got an updated report on PFOS testing that's going on, quite a bit of discussion on that. We received a landfill activities update from Brett Rice, and our solid waste update from Corey. Then on that same day, we had our Clay County, Moore and Clay County Joint Powers Authority diversion meeting, and we did approve access easements, and a couple of negotiation summaries, and then some task order amendments were approved at that meeting. That afternoon, we then had the diversion board of authority meeting, and we received a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers update and timeline of their remaining projects that need to be done. We did get the 2024 budget, and quite a bit of discussion regarding that. And those drone footages, I think we saw one here not too long ago, but those are always very interesting, and I would highly encourage people to take a look at that on the diversion website. They're updated constantly, and there's really some interesting things there. On the 30th, I attended the intergovernmental retreat, or, excuse me, the 26th, I attended the intergovernmental retreat. I thought overall, it was, it was really, I think it was an important discussion to have. Childcare is obviously a really important component of what we need to have for a successful economy moving forward. As I stressed, I think my last comment here was I, you know, I think that intergovernmental retreat, it was basically preaching to the choir at that meeting, because I think everybody there knew, you know, in the public sector, what the issues were, but I really think we're missing a component there by not having the private sector and business involved with that important discussion. And I think I've talked to Paul about that, and being the two members on this intergovernment, I think we're going to probably talk about that moving forward, that we're, most of these things that we're trying to accomplish, it needs the help of both public and private, and if we really want to get someplace, we need to move in that direction. So, we'll be having those discussions going forward. But I do want to thank all the presenters, and we did receive, we did have our legislative Senator Kupac, Senator Johnson, Representative Joy, and Representative Keeler, we're all there, and then we also had a representative from Senator Tina Smith's office was there, Jordan Scherer, Scherer, yeah, and so, yeah, so that was, it was really good. Our, I want to thank our Clay County Childcare Regulatory Group for their presentation, and I was really impressed with Tracy Tollison and her presentation that DGF is doing. It's really something to, you know, I think a lot of school districts could really look closely at that, and with some real potential. I know it can have some impact on the private, but again, that's why we have to have that public-private sharing of information, and I hope those legislatures were able to take note of some different things and the need to assist the private sector in that regard. On the 30th, Commissioner Mojo and I did a, had a meeting with Moorhead regarding the, basically, it was the discussion regarding the advocating for funding for the diversion project, and, you know, Moorhead has their own Senate and House bill in there right now for what they need, and, you know, there's, we needed to, obviously, we need to advocate for what is still our needs outside of the city limits, and we need to do that collectively and together, as our joint powers agreement suggests we do or tells us we should do. So, and right now, and I know Commissioner Mojo had to leave that meeting a little bit early, but one of the, so one of the things that we're trying to do is, we're going to, you know, we're going to have this list, the order that we had talked about, and I think now, we're going to try to incorporate within that what the House and Senate file numbers are for each of those. So, Moorhead has two separate, or has a House and Senate file for the two items that they have remaining, and there is no House and Senate file yet for Clay County's needs. So, Joe Paulson was there, and they're going to work on trying to get our local legislatures to submit something so that we have a House and Senate file bill for Clay County's needs, but we will collectively advocate for both of them when they're, so that's kind of how that, that meeting left that day, and we're going to convene again, so. And that concludes my report.
Frank?
Yeah, I also attended the highway tracking meeting that Commissioner Campbell talked about. The only thing, I guess I would add, that the letting schedule for CASA 1 paving will be February 27th, CASA 26, Millen Overlay will be put out March 5th, and CASA 14 bridge replacement will be let out March 12th. Everything, pretty much everything else, Kevin covered already. That evening, I attended the planning commission meeting. Matt Jacobson requested, they're doing a land development code update, and requested public input from that, hoping to get some input in to see if there's any changes for that code that needed to be done. Other than that, there was a, just to permit, application for temporarily store a house on a parcel that was approved, and there was two requests to extend mining, gravel mining operations, and a portable tomb in this hot mix plant, which were both approved. There was no objections to any of them. Then, again, I guess I also attended the intergovernmental retreat that Kevin pretty well covered, and nothing really to add about it, I guess. I mean, I guess I, too, was impressed with Tracy Tollison's explanation of what's going on at DGF, but I, I mean, we had a person there that also said, well, they're taking people away from us. I mean, in one, one instance, we're saying, we don't have enough childcare, and the other instance says, hey, you're taking people away from us, you know, so I don't know which way they want it to be, you know. It's, I think it's a good program, though. That's my report.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
One more item, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I had a call also from a gentleman that concerned about management of wolves in the, in the county. I guess he's going to, he's going to contact all 87 counties, and he think, the wolves are supposed to be about 16,000, 1600 animals supposed to be managed at, and they're, I think they're saying they're about 2,600 right now, so they want to come up with a plan to manage them a little bit better. So, we'll probably hear it from him in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe I'll begin with the intergovernmental retreat we were at. Commissioner Campbell covered that very, very well, and agree with all the comments, and I do want to echo what he said about moving forward with the, with the group next year, is Clay County will be the host of that committee and the event. So, getting the private, private sector involved, I think is very important. So, most of my work over the last week or so has been involved with children's mental health, and I'll start with our, a meeting I had on the, on the first, we had a monthly meeting with the Children's Mental Health, LAC, and on that, the main topics we talked about there were the survey that we send out every year. Last year, and this is finding out from professionals and from parent groups, what are the needs, where are we succeeding, where are we failing, and, you know, trying to listen to what the survey tells us so that we can improve the work we do collectively between social services and our partners throughout the, our system in the private, in the private sector. And anyway, those surveys are going to be going out for 2024. Last year, we received 84 responses of the surveys we sent out, which is very good, and hopefully, we're going to get more. So, when we talk about professionals, that means, you know, nonprofits, profits that work in the mental health sector, as well as school districts, and how they work collectively to get people, children in need in the proper place for help as quickly as possible, and then between provider and provider, how can we work together to cover those needs more collectively. Along with that, I've had, been part of, and some of you, others at the same time have joined in, moving to our priority of working toward a, what we call a PRTF, the psychiatric residential treatment facility, and those conversations, you know, started about, well, probably started a long time ago, but while I've been here, started taking a little more active place, beginning in October, and I guess maybe it was even earlier in the year. But Rep. Keeler brought in, at that time, the committee to come to Clay County and listen to people, all of us, many of us were involved there, and talking about children's mental health, and this committee is having to do with human service finance and human service policy. And this is the, one of the committees, but a major committee that will be working through to help us develop a plan toward eventually maybe getting a PRTF in Clay County. There's been subsequent meetings since then, and in particular, we've had a couple nonprofits join us. Steve's been part of that all the time. Ginny's been there a couple, and what we've developed over the last week or so is a plan, working along with Rep. Keeler, with the support of our other legislators, and so I want to report on it today, and next week, what I'd like to do is offer that Rhonda Porter will come from social services, and we'll bring forth a background of what these discussions have been, the background to it, also a resolution for us to look at, and if approved, we'll keep moving forward. And if approved, we'll keep moving forward. Representative Keeler is going to create a request on behalf of this resolution to bring bonding, to bring an application for bonding, so into a bill form so that it can be jacketed. The idea of jacketing it right now is that we are in a policy and, you know, a bonding year so that even though we know there wouldn't be any bonding this year, it gets us in the queue. And then the idea beyond that would be the momentum that we can carry from Clay County. Rhonda sent out her survey to 15 counties that have identified they would like support and have Clay County move toward a, move toward a PRTF. And so it would be very collaborative. And if we get enough momentum with that in 2025, perhaps we can have a, have enough momentum to have a bonding tour. And with that, perhaps be part of bonding in 2026. And again, those efforts, if they lead the right place, bonding might not come at all at one time, but certainly, you know, would bring phasing of bonding to that type of profit for whatever we deem necessary to pull this all together. So that's the overall view. Rhonda also at this time has put in for a grant for a PRTF startup. And with that, there's potentially the availability of $1.3 million that can help in some of the planning and the pre-design and whatever, if there was any land acquisition or anything like that. But that's the purpose of those funds. That RFP is, has already been submitted and we're waiting to hear from DHS. And again, that may be a little process. Don't know when we'll get a response on that, but that's, that's in the works. So just kinda wanted to let you know, we're, things have kinda headed pretty quickly over the last month or so. And I'm, I'm so personally very excited. I think we can do, when I hear the potential we had in one meeting, when we got the responses of these 15 counties, there was already enough demand that 27 of these beds could be filled. And, and four of those were identified potentially in our juvenile detention. So anyway, if anybody has any comments about that, we can talk about it a little bit now. Steve was part of that. Ginny, if you have any comments or whatever. Otherwise, it's mainly a report today, but I would like it on the agenda for next, for the resolution and that discussion background, you know, with the help of Rhonda next meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I might. Thank you. This is a really exciting development. As you all know, we've talked about this being a priority, understanding that it's not been, not a bonding year, but really when you have legislative, local legislative support to really lift the ask is really what this is part of. It's similar to the process in which we took with our resource recovery facility, making sure that we were able to get on the bonding tours for the summer, to really tell the story of what the need is locally and advocate for why Clay County would be a fantastic place to host something of this. I, you know, I, I really appreciate the fact that Rhonda is continuing to push hard to find additional areas for funding and grants, similar to what we've done with the withdrawal management facility. If the public is seeing a trend, it's the trend that Clay County understands that serving citizens is required and often is quite costly when you don't do that in your own community. And so hearing the feedback from the additional counties on how they've identified this could be of use to them too is something that we, we emulated with the juvenile center as well. So understand that this probably is coming quickly and so wanting to get this on your radar as quick as possible, but understanding that our commitment today is not spending a dollar today. It's a commitment to be part of the, the process to advocate for funding down the road. And I too have brought up the, the idea and thought that hiring a lobbyist in some sort of capacity down the road, not today, obviously, maybe for next session, would be something that this board might want to entertain, understanding that we can't always be in St. Paul all the time.
And too, if I could just follow up on a couple different things. Rhonda has reached out, as Commissioner Krabnikoff mentioned, to 15 counties. We now have an additional two counties that are anticipating providing support to that, so we have a total of 17. And I just wanted to, just to clarify on, on the RFP parts. And so we have, we have submitted a, along with solutions, we've submitted a grant for an adult ERTS program.
Yeah.
The mental health. And there is now a PRTF, PRTF startup grants that just came out that they're submitting, asking for RFPs. And so Rhonda will probably be coming forward with that. I just wanted to clarify those two, two items. So I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
And in this participation, we've had two, we've had two providers as part of these discussions also. So just so, you know, I just wanna reiterate that, that it's not just our social services. Yeah.
If I, if I can, if I can do a follow up to Commissioner Mojo's last comment about the lobbyist, and I, you know, and I think if we have an awful lot of other counties interested in partnering with us, I think it might be a good idea to extend some more reaching out in that regard to see if there would be an interest on behalf of those other counties as well as us to partake in that lobbyist effort. I think that might go a long way. I, in this, in this early planning, I think that would be really helpful to do that.
And that's been mentioned in our group.
Okay.
So the intent is there.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll wait for next week on that, have that on the agenda. And then I just wanna mention my last meeting that I wanna report on was yesterday, at Moorhead Planning Commission. And we had our election officers, Nicole Matson, who's been a longtime member, is the new chair. One thing of interest for us that was approved, I think to this group, so our land that is just off of Broadway and Wall Street, there is, there's some land that goes up against the levee and there's been one of the legal lots to build on. There's been one residence built along that road. Anyway, on the south side of that is 54th Avenue and they vacated that. So now that's becoming a private road. The watershed district was part of this request. And so just know that there'll be easement that the city can use for the levee or people to use for levy, you know, maintenance or whatever is needed, but now that will be a private road. So anyway, that was approved. That was the main one. Other than that, just there was a building kinda by the library and just north of that, there's a building that's been for rent that a new religious institute's gonna be moving into for use. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also attended the solid waste advisory committee that has been reported on by Commissioner Campbell. I attended the intergovernmental retreat, the discussion regarding childcare and all of the different components of it. I agree, having as many folks around the table, particularly with the decision makers in St. Paul, which so oftentimes regulate how many and who and how we license and how that process and expedited or not expedited works. So thank you to the joint powers for the planning of that event. I know that you do that for a substantial amount of months, so thank you for that. I always look forward to the discussions that we have there. On Monday, the following Monday then, I attended the AMC Extension Committee meeting in which we discussed further the MOU that will be coming for renewal to all of the counties. We did tweak some information given what some of the concerns were coming from, for counties, particularly, understanding that sometimes those performance-based components really need to happen at a local level with the local advisory committees. Our documents will then be discussed at the AMC Legislative Conference in February, or on the 20th, rather. The next day, I attended a discussion at Representative Keeler's invitation with our county engineer to really understand further the gravel tax implications and how Clay County allocates that gravel tax, understanding that 85 to 90% of all of the aggregate produced and mined from Clay County is delivered to North Dakota. How do then we deal with the repair of the roads that so often are really damaged during that process because gravel tax really goes to the township level? There's not a whole lot of revenue left for counties specifically to deal with that. So continue the dialogue on that and how the law is written. That was two meetings. The first was with the MINDOT representatives. The second was with House Research to look at how other areas of the state deal with the same types of issues. That afternoon, I attended the MetroCog Executive, or that afternoon, rather, I also attended the discussion with the diversion authority and the city of Moorhead in regards to how we continue to advocate and tell our story in St. Paul for the additional funds that are needed to complete the components for flood protection on the Minnesota side, knowing that we do have such a non-flexible agreement in that contract for our duty to advocate for funds and ask for funds at the state level, making sure that we're as clear with legislators as possible, but also taking from their concerns and comments on how they can best tell the story with their colleagues in St. Paul. The next day, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We did have a long dialogue on some of the issues. Right now, there's, as I've reported, there's a bit of an issue with an NDOT, a North Dakota DOT contract. There's a funding holdup. And because there are two unapproved UPWP amendments pending review by North Dakota DOT, it's really held up a lot of the projects and ability to complete, or receive reimbursed funds. There are some implications on the Minnesota side. On the North Dakota side, the, the projects that are being held up right now are the metro perimeter highway study, the West Metro perimeter highway study, as you recall, with the diversion authority. Those are, that's a really important study to make sure they're, they're looking at that with the potential for the bypass that we've talked from I-94 to I-29. That's really important. But on the Minnesota side, the highway, I-94, 20th Street interchange study. And as you've possibly seen, they're seeking, seeking input from the public on that. That's a really heavily traveled corridor. And that our concern is because Minnesota DOT is in the process of a very large look at how the I-94 corridor is from the river to 336. Our concern is that the lack of study during this part might have some serious implications on that. And then the other part is the University 10th Street, Uni-10 corridor study. There's been substantial discussion with NDOT and federal highway on how this, this holdup will really affect us. For the first time in a long time, someone said, I wish we could just work with the state of Minnesota on this. It seems like Minnesota DOT is just really so much far, so much more attentive to the concerns in that one. But there was a meeting yesterday with MINDOT to really talk about how this reallocation of projects and how it affects the funding streams, understanding there's local funding and budget implications. So a lot to digest there, but certainly the Minnesota, Minnesota partners and North Dakota partners are really working closely together to advocate for the funds. It was proposed that it might be important for the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting to have meetings in Bismarck with the state highway department. I know we've talked about out-of-state, in-state travel in the past and, and I know with, with North Dakota, with Fargo, that, that sometimes is hazy. We, we travel to Fargo all the time. But it might be important as vice chair of that board to travel to Bismarck to advocate for that. I think it's particularly of interest because of the large project in Minnesota that we are worried about. So I'll let you know if we'll need approval for that later. But we did have update on the TMA and the transportation, transportation management area transition. We're really in good hands with that, but that was a report on that. Yesterday, I attended the DMV withdrawal management updates from our construction firms. Really exciting to see the work there. Boy, we, we really lucked out when we decided to go for construction this winter. It's been a good winter with the exception of some of the rain and mud that they have to deal with. But in terms of the withdrawal management facility, the project status looks great. They're really working on completing the masonry. After the meeting, we had an opportunity to walk through that facility and my, oh my, can we be proud of that facility and the work that will happen there inside of those walls? And yeah, it's, it's really something. I did request of Troy and Steve that to maybe extend an invitation to the Moorhead Business Association, similar to what we did with our new correctional facility, to really kinda tell the story of the work that will happen there and, and the lives that were changing in that new facility. Continue to be on track and mostly on budget. There is a very small change order that will be coming in the amount of approximately $9,100. One was the addition of corridor door, double doors to add for the ease of movement for staff and the folks that will be walking those hallways. But the second was an addition of the access panels that will need to be used to flush, add flush valves. And so if you recall, when we did our correctional facility, there's a corridor behind the cells that staff is able to flush and make sure the, the maintenance of those facilities are as clear as possible. And so adding this additional piece will add an access panel since there is not a walkway behind. So I believe that's coming to this board in the next couple weeks, correct? And then we did have a discussion, the DMV construction, the steel erection between certain grid lines were, has been completed. They're hoping to complete the entire building of steel by the end of the week and then start the exterior framing next week. And the roof then will be started the second week of March. So we're working with Clyde McCarthy in terms of signage, making sure we're taking into account how the flow of that property will go, particularly with the west side drive around with folks with trailers and/or semis, making sure that's lit. And then the joint sign between the two facilities. I believe that concludes my report there. And then yesterday, I did have an opportunity to attend as a member of the Planning Commission Member Community Engagement Center, or engagement discussion at the Holly Community Center in regards to a very large wind energy project that's in the works discussion. We're really at the, the engagement level, talking with landowners about what the, what the requirements are, how we work with the county for that. Wind energy and solar energy really have been important parts of the, the energy grid in Clay County. So I, I believe it's from the board and planning staff's view that when done, it can really be done right and we're excited about those potentials. But certainly, it's, it's at the stage where it needs to be community members, landowners discussing with the company about how and could it work. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. On Wednesday, the 24th of January, I attended the diversion authority finance committee meeting virtually. We, Director Paulson submitted the 2023 draft budget of $159 million. That was sent on to the Board, Board of Authority to review. And we elected Rick Steen, who's a longtime member of the diversion authority. He was elected to vice chair of the Finance Committee. Had a discussion on the South University flood wall that is creating problems. Had a discussion on the South University flood wall that is creating problems with slippage over in, in Fargo, but is part of the Diversion Authority infrastructure. Pretty costly repair bill, and it had been determined that the North Dakota Water Resources was not going to provide any coverage, and there was no insurance coverage for the project. So, it'll be coming out of the Fargo's contingency funds on that. Commissioner Campbell covered. The next day, I attended the Diversion Authority meeting with him, Board of Authority, and he covered that fairly well. Monday, the 29th, I had a conversation with Joe Rosso, Rasso of the Economic Development Commission. He had approached the last joint meeting we had, and we discussed the reduction of our contribution to them going from a hundred-and-ten-thousand to eighty-five thousand. And he indicated that may have some impact on Clay County having membership on the Executive Committee. The Executive Committee has just been reassigned among political and private entities as part of the Governance Committee that they had. And at this point, we are the sole Minnesota governmental representative on it. Just a little history, for as far back as most people can remember, we have been the second-largest governmental contributor to the, I keep wanting to say Diversion Authority, I'm getting my meetings mixed up, the E D C. Problem we have right now is Fargo is now the second-largest. There are only two openings, three openings, I'm sorry, for governmental representation on that board. And two of those are filled by the Governance Rules by Cass County, who contributes a lion's share of the operating budget. We left it in our conversation. Mr. Rasso indicated this would be a decision made by the Executive Committee, but that Fargo did want the position. If that occurs, there will be no Minnesota representation on the, their Executive Committee. There will be two, Morehead and a Clay County representative on the General Board. Morehead, right now, I believe is paying twenty-five thousand a year. We are paying eighty-five. I'll be attending the meeting Friday, and any feedback, I think this is the only forum we really have where we can discuss it among each other. Anything feedback you've got would be appreciated. I'm a little disappointed, but I think that we have different priorities on this side of the river and a number of issues. And I'm somebody that really believes we have to be collaborative and work with other entities. E D C does what they do very well. As Joe Rasso pointed out to me, there's very little corporate or business membership on the Minnesota side.
And why does he think that is? I mean, I, part of my, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I mean, part of, part of the problem that we've had for a long time is that when we receive communication from that organization, it is never, or if it does, it's very, very minimal inclusive of opportunities or projects to promote growth on our side of the river as well. And that's, and that's part of, I think, the message that unfortunately, you're the, I don't want to say you're the whipping boy, but you're, you're the messenger that needs to provide that to that organization from us. And, and part of my concern is that instead of understanding that we had concern with how our money would be well-spent, going back to my forage days, what's our cost per ware of the dollar, instead of hearing that concern and doing something about it, it seems to be they heard that concern and they're saying, "We're good without you."
We had a pretty serious conversation when I first got on the Board. And there were promises of a Minnesota representative office in Minnesota. Our problem then was Deed would not take any recommendations from E D C because they had a Fargo address and they dealt with in-state issues. And again, I don't feel like the whipping boy. I'm just at a loss for any kind of defense or identifying any real value that, that has happened since the promises to this point unfulfilled that were made.
Mr. Chair, a question. So, you've been on the Executive Committee since you got on this Board, right?
Yes.
And how many, how many people were on the previous Executive Committee? It was, it was, it was over ten, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, I think it was fourteen.
And, and so, in this, moving forward, I think they've determined that it should be six. Is that right? You know, we're, I still consider us to be a significant contributor. We, we, we always promote this area as a, a population of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in this area that's represented. And I, I think that equates to, with Clay County's population being about twenty-six percent of that. You know, I, I certainly, I can, I can see Fargo's argument as to why they, you know, if they're contributing where that they should have. But when they went to six, why didn't they consider seven?
I wasn't on the Governance Committee.
I, I know, but I, but I guess, if they would have, if they would have just gone from that bigger number to seven, and you, you know, you could, I don't know if they're trying to split equally, government versus private, and that's why they went with three government and three?
They're trying to emphasize the private end of it.
Yeah. But I, I just think that, you know, I, I think it's, it's good that, that we'd still be on the Government Board, but the Executive Committee really is the place where the agenda is really established. You know, we, I think we all know that. That's where, where the agenda is established. And, and to have nobody on this side of the river involved with that component of it, you know, going to what Commissioner Mojo's comments, I, I think there could be the tendency for even less vision for, or promotion for the east side of the river. And that's, and that, that's concerning to me.
Cass County is, is infused with a large amount of money from the state of North Dakota for job development or next generation, or I'm going, using my terminology, next generation agriculture, a whole lot of different things. That's not coming from this side of the river. You know, I, I, I feel we're at a point to where, and Joe was a little offended when I said it, but I said, "What's our return on investment?" The, the response that what's good for Cass County and Fargo is good for all of us is wearing a little thin. We have constituents here, we have three, four entities right now that we use for economic development, and a lion's share of that money has gone to the E D C. That may be something we need to rethink, and that's not a threat. I, I think the E D C is a great organization, they're very good at what they do. It's just that they aren't doing anything that we need.
If I might too, you know, I appreciate, I've heard, as you have multiple times, what's good for Fargo, what's good for West Fargo is, is good for the region, and, and no one's arguing, no one's arguing that growth is not helpful to all of those involved. But just as we are going, and you have gone to that Board and said, "What is our return on investment?", we have an obligation to our taxpayers on this side of the river. We have our obligation to business owners on this side of the river for a budget line item. But what, what is the benefit to Clay County? I, I really struggle, and it was already said once, because we're getting to the point where budget season is, is really not that far away, is we have to scrutinize budgets on how it best helps the community, the communities that we serve, the residents of Clay County, all of Clay County as a whole. And, and it, you know, I can understand if there's a couple of big projects on the North Dakota side that we're going to bring in, and then, then we'll work on shovel-ready sites on the Minnesota side or help to do this. It's not going to be all or nothing, just like the MetroCog isn't all or nothing. But there has to be something that, that justifies us spending such a large amount and not really seeing a whole lot of tangible benefit.
I think we, and what do we pay the Chamber?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, this year, we pay the Chamber a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars. For that, we got several legislative review meetings. We've gotten a representation in St. Paul with constituents, business people, elected officials. All of that worked out, basically lobbying for us. You know, we, we've really gotten a good return on investment. And I think that's something we need to, we need something that addresses what our taxpayers benefit from. Yeah, Kevin?
You know, you know, again, I, I want to go back to, you know, when we started our partnership with the E D C, you know, the, the mission of the E D C was to, was to promote and bring high-paying jobs to this region. That, that was really what their goal was moving, and, and that was, that's a good goal. Anytime you could, the more high-paying jobs you can have, the, the, the more you're going to see the opportunity for people to come here. And, you know, so we need to do our fair share when that happens to promote. Clay County is the place where they should land when, when they do come here for, for these jobs. But at the same point in time, there's, there's a, you know, we need to actively pursue building our economic industry in Clay County, which includes the private sector and business. And quite frankly, I, I think, you know, we've fallen behind the eight ball in, in that regard, and, and a lot of it, I think it's no surprise to anybody here, but a lot of it are issues, and the Chamber's working on it now, as you talked about, are issues that are related to St. Paul. And, you know, that, that stands in the way, I think, of people, whether they decide to do their business in Morehead or Fargo. There's some, there's some, obviously, there's some border cities legislation that we're thankful for, and it's been good. I don't know if it goes far enough. But, but anyway, I, you know, I, I don't want to see us not have that relationship with the E D C, but I just, I'm just hopeful that they can understand that we're still a significant part. This side of the river is still a significant part. Like you said, Cass County and Fargo, a significant number, amount of their dollars comes from the state. We don't have that opportunity here. But we still need to have the message. And that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at on the deal, I know. But, you know, I think hopefully, Dave, you can advocate for us to, you know, that we still think it's important for, and that, like I said, that Executive Committee really sets the agenda. Let's face it, it sets the agenda. And to not have anybody on this side of the river being just a voice on that is...
I, I have my concerns about return on investment. And, you know, eighty-five thousand in the overall budget's nothing to, it's, it's not a, a, a major investment on the part of this Clay County government, but it is taxpayers' money, and it's eighty-five thousand dollars that needs to be spent on something that there's a return on. And I guess what I'm asking, is there any, if I, am I missing something on, on what we're getting?
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm not ready to pull.
Well, I'm not either.
That, that funding.
No, but I'm, I'm a little taken aback. I think that the assumption that you can go forward without this, you know, we're two states, two counties, a number of cities, and you can go forward with just the western half in, in the decision-making position is a little...
Yeah.
I think it's sending a message.
I think we need to see how this pans out. And depending on how that pans out, we can have the discussion about where the best bang for our bucks going to be.
Yeah, I, I really do appreciate this conversation. You know, I could be a little off on the numbers here, but we went, we're out of that executive position for five thousand dollars. I think Fargo was ninety thousand, and we were eighty-five.
Fargo's, I think, a hundred thousand.
Oh, did they go to a hundred? Okay, I'm a little off there. But my point is, I, to any dollar amount, I still find it strange. I understand maybe a rationale toward money and position, but that's not representation. And, and, and to, I guess I would request, being I'm no longer on the Board with you, that, you know, at, at the next meeting, or maybe we should have Joe back here, I don't know, and have a conversation, how does, you know, Morehead, or excuse me, Clay County fit in the plan? And the money we put toward More Downtown Inc., I think was very appropriate. I, I think they'll leverage that money at a much greater rate, you know, than our investment over there. Again, I'm with you, I think with all of you, I'm not, I, I don't think we should pull the plug, but yet at the same time, I think, you know, with our budget responsibility, we have, you know, we have a certain dollar amount for economic development, and, and so we got to find the most efficient place and the highest leverage place we use it. And for us, I think it absolutely is those groups that can help us leverage to St. Paul and get some identification with them of what's going on here so that we get Deed and other entities working greater to this area. That's, it's all about leverage that direction, in my opinion.
Anyway, I, I didn't want to drag this out too far, but...
Well, it's important.
...my peers, and we've got to discuss it in the meeting, so I do appreciate it. Anybody got anything else to, I think it enlightened me a little bit.
Well, I just, you know, going to what Commissioner, you know, we were, we were at a hundred-and-ten thousand before, and it was, it was my thought that we pull twenty-five and give to the Downtown Morehead Inc. And it, and it, and it wasn't necessarily going to be a permanent deal. I said it, it's just because More, Downtown Morehead Inc. came to us, and they showed us what all is going on right now. And, and the, the idea of promoting that through that process and helping that vision for downtown to really expand is, was a really, you know, and it's, it's something that, once that gets going, you know, then, you know, but I, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of at a loss with this E D C thing.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? When looking at the county website, and you search economic development, it identifies that there's a Clay County Economic Development Committee.
That's us.
Right? But that we continue to talk about ways, I mean, if you, if you click, click on that, it goes to 2012 and talks about a lot of the ideas and needs for bringing high-paying jobs to the community and housing and childcare components, all of these components. And while I appreciate being part of these larger organizations, sometimes we do walk away questioning one, what, how is this benefiting Clay County particularly? And so, part of the dialogue when we did ship some of the funds to Derek LaPointe and Downtown Morehead Inc. is that we felt that there was really an opportunity there for them to continue the work and do, do a lot of the work that we're, we've identified as a need over here. Derek LaPointe is, and his organization is not the economic, only economic development group in, in Clay County. And so, as we continue, I think, I agree, I think we should go, go through with this a little longer to see if, if we notice any, any other changes. But if we don't, I, I think the Karen Lowers of the world... any other changes. But if we don't, I, I think the Karen Lowers of the world would appreciate and use some of the funds to really benefit the communities that, that we all serve. Understanding that Barnesville's not the only one that has an economic development component, all of our small cities really are, are trying to do their best with limited budgets. And $85,000 would go a long way with our communities, Dilworth and Glendon. I mean, they, that would really be beneficial to them. And, and so I, I know that that Economic Development Committee is us, but we've not really met in that capacity for a substantial amount of time. And, and maybe as we play this out, maybe that's something we need to do.
That's a good, good suggestion. Steve, we can keep that in the back of our minds for committee of the whole. Right. Anything else? I finished my report and get out of everybody's hair. On the, on Thursday, the 1st of February, I remotely attended the Emergency Network Legislative Committee, did a little internal housekeeping, elected a vice chair, Marshall Ward. I think really what stands out for me in this meeting, I've talked about statute 403, and the issues we've had with that so far as getting the 911 and the emergency communication statute updated so that we reflect next generation 911. And we've had a lot of problem with lobbyists from the hardline communication providers that we've got in the state. And we haven't been able to get anything done on that. There has been a RFP put out by the state to get a third-party mediator to work with us governmental people and the private sector people to try and work something out. And that's just going to be a long process. The good news is that any day now, there's going to be an FCC ruling on possibly based on problems that other states are having just like this, with the point of systems and remunerating them for those costs. And hopefully, that, that procedural ruling from the FCC will say that, that must be done by private providers at their cost and not at state cost. If that happens, everything I've been complaining about here for the last year, hopefully, will go away, and we'll be able to deal with that. I'll keep you apprised on developments there. Later that day, we had a selection committee for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center director position. We did two screening interviews with two of the candidates. They both did a good job. Right now, we're looking at three other people, and we should, by the end of the week, know if we're going to have additional remote interviews for them before we finalize and come up with a list of finalists. And I also attended the intergovernmental retreat, which has been covered well. And that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 23rd, I participated in highway tracking, which has been covered by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross. On 24th, I had a department head evaluation. On the 25th, I participated in the SWAC meeting, which has been covered by our commission. On the, that afternoon, I met with Justin Sorum and representatives from the City of Holly in regards to, with the purchase of the MinDOT Holly location. The City of Holly had reached out about the possibility of utilizing salt and sand out of that location. So there'll be more to come on that. Participated in MCC JPA meeting, which has been addressed. On the 26th, I went to the IGR conference. Again, thanks, thanks to the City Morehead for organizing that conference, as been mentioned. In 2025, Clay County will be responsible for that. And so generally, the, the topic is kind of driven by what's happening. But as a commission, if there's different ideas that you have that you'd like to share with our committee members, that would be wonderful. First, we met with Justin and Alex again, and talked about County Road Project One, and also the 11th Street Underpass. I believe that bids for that project were due this past Friday, so I'm sure there'll be some more information coming on that project. The, on the 2nd, I met with Dan Molly, Dan Molly from City Morehead, and Derek LaPointe, and a series of shared issues. I think that, to the point on your discussion of economic development, I think that the most recent update on economic development from the City Morehead's going to be coming out soon, and have invited City Morehead and Derek LaPointe to come and share some of the exciting things that, that have happened over the last year. And then, again, just want to, just make note, we continue to see things on social media with, with Herbergers starting the, the tear down this past week. Our DMV is still located in its current, current location and will be until further notice. And so, again, we, entrances would be on the north, northeast corner and east corner for easiest access. On the 5th, I participated in the owners' meeting, which has been covered. Again, just reiterate, it's exciting to see that the detox, detoxification facility, substance use facility, and what we're going to be able to do there. I did ask, did ask Gertz and Clyde McCarthy to provide an update. And so in March, we'll be bringing forward a full, a full update to this commission. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Sarah, you got anything for us? Did Jackie warn you? Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned.